Just to briefly give you the guidelines on public comment. We invite and actively seek the public's input in matters relevant to school board governance and provide time in our business meetings to hear from our residents and community members. During public comment, we expect respectful and on-topic comments. Disruptive behavior from speakers or from members of the public in attendance will not be tolerated. Anyone who willfully disrupt this meeting in a manner that prevents or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting may be ejected by the chair. The following protocols would be expected. State your name and address or your voting district. Address comments to the school board as a whole. Limit comments to those matters that are relevant to school board governance or school division operations. Give written statements and other supporting materials to the clerk. If you are unable to complete the presentation in the time allotted, a copy of supporting materials will be provided to school board members. Three minutes will be allowed for each presenter to speak. However, the chair may, well, that doesn't apply tonight. A color-coded light system is in the front to time presentations. The yellow light means the speaker is two minutes into your presentation. The red light means the speaker has reached the three-minute limit and must stop at that point. In order to maintain respect for all points of view, the school board requests no clapping, booing, or any other audible forms of support or non-support be used. If members of the public want to show their support for a speaker, they may stand or raise their hands. We have 11 speakers tonight on tap. The first three, Tori Selmer, Vernon Lecty, and Philadelphia Soto, in that order.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Tori Selmer, and I am mom to four children within the ACPS district. I am here as a parent in the Whitehall district. My children range from elementary to high school students. I am in a unique position as I am also an eighth-grade math teacher for ACPS. Tonight, I come to you as a concerned parent regarding what the future middle school experience will be for my rising sixth- and seventh graders. My purpose tonight is to ask for your guidance and intervention, but also to make my fellow ACPS families aware of the changes that are coming to middle school, especially to our eighth-grade students, but also to a few seventh-grade students like my son. Next year, all middle school students will, all eighth-grade classes will be run on an every-other-day schedule, just like the high school. This includes math and language arts courses. The county is asking eighth-grade students to take eight credits of classes, while freshmen in high school are only taking seven, not to mention a minimum of 13 state and county mandated assessments from all core classes that eighth graders take. Middle school students are still developmentally, developing socially, emotionally, and academically in order to be able to handle an every-other-day course load by the time they reach high school. Why are we not honoring an every-other day, the healthy development of middle schoolers? I am truly worried about the extra unnecessary stress. My children and all children will be under, under, with more classes, all of which will be moving at a faster pace. My soon-to-be seventh grader will have a choice for math class next year, math eight or algebra, both which are every-other-day classes. Being advanced in math does not mean he has developed the needed organizational skills or maturity required to be successful in an every-other-day math class. Additionally, there are only a few electives that he is interested in taking and would prefer to have math every day, but we are being told that this is not an option. Why not? Why can't parents and students have a voice and a choice to place their child into a class that they will feel will be appropriate, beneficial, and build the student towards success? At a time when we are recovering from COVID by bridging gaps, why are we cutting the time in half for our math and language arts classes? These gaps are evident and do affect every aspect of learning in the classroom. When asked for data and research that support these changes, the county has replied to teachers, and I quote, "The data is out there, find it yourselves." As a teacher, I find this alarming, but as a parent, I find this response appalling. As a school board, you are charged with approving curriculum. At this increased pace, I am certain that not all the curriculum will be covered and that needs to be addressed. I want to know that my children are receiving the full curriculum at a pace that allows them to think, process, ask questions, and be involved in the learning process, not memorize and move on. I am left wondering, why are these changes being made and at what cost to our kids? I want the choice for my children and for all students to be able to enroll in year-long math classes and language arts classes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Selmer. Vernon Lecty.
Good evening. My name is Vernon Lecty, and I teach at Albemarle High School, and I am president of the Albemarle Education Association. I have right here an open letter to the Albemarle County School Board in regards to collective bargaining. Dear School Board members, Last school year, Albemarle County school staff united to gain basic labor rights already enjoyed by many public school teachers across the country. After a law passed by the Virginia General Assembly went into effect in May 2021, teachers and school employees were poised to finally receive a say in their working conditions by being able to negotiate their employment contracts through a process called collective bargaining. Because of the way the state law was written, it requires municipal workers, such as ACPS employees, to receive approval from their local government or school board in order to have their right to bargain recognized. Here in Albemarle, the Albemarle Education Association started building broad support among staff to become the legally-recognized bargaining unit. Collective bargaining is a tool that allows workers the opportunity to help the local government address the biggest issues that are causing high rates of turnover and staff shortages. A recent research report from the Commonwealth Institute identifies how collective bargaining can be a critical tool to improve school staffing, pay, and morale. Collective bargaining, giving teachers and school staff a voice in what goes on in our schools, will help achieve the goal of attracting and retaining quality educators, a goal shared by the entire community. We are disappointed that despite the fact that the majority of ACPS workers came together to ask you last May to accept their collective bargaining resolution, you voted against bargaining rights for employees at that time. Since last spring, our staffing shortages have gotten worse, and other localities have begun to pass strong collective bargaining resolutions. Charlottesville school bus drivers will soon bargain their first contract, and the city schools are poised to pass a strong resolution in the coming weeks. We worry if you do not take action soon, our children and our schools will be left behind as your recruitment efforts become even more difficult. The time for collective bargaining is now. When we brought a resolution before the board, we asked that you engage with us. Work collaboratively with us to draft a resolution that works for Albemarle County. Make sure that your most valuable resource for our children's education have a real say in creating the conditions that support both staff and student success. Sincerely, the Albemarle Education Association and the following individuals.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lecty. Ms. Soto.
Good evening. Mi nombre es Philadelphia Soto. Soy una maestra de Woodbrook Elementary. I teach at Woodbrook Elementary. This evening, I brought with me this beautiful golden apple. An award I was given last school year by my colleagues, my students, and the families who this evening are here with us. Gracias a las familias por estar aquí. I have been a licensed teacher for eight years. However, I have been part of the Albemarle County Public Schools for much longer than that. This is the school division I was born at as an educator. This is the school division I live in, and this is the school division that I really hold close to my heart. I joined the Albemarle Education Association two years ago because of collective bargaining. I believe Albemarle County, when we say that we want to do better for families, students, and educators. However, the steps forward are falling short. Collective bargaining will be more than a survey, it will be more than an interview. Collective bargaining will make us active participants in the changes and in the decision-making process. We, teachers, nurses, counselors, bus drivers, janitors, cafeteria, and office staff, we are the ones in the building. We are the ones handling the best we can. Handling does not mean that one has achieved his best. We need to be able to perform our best. ACPS surveys, interviews, and new comedies do discuss, they discuss our issues, but they don't have the power to solve them. Collective bargaining has the potential to truly change these things for the better. When we look at the percentage of educators who leave each year, it may not look like a big number. However, those of us who are in the building, we know that every time an educator in our school quits, just like two have quit in the last two weeks in my school, we feel, we feel those educators leaving, and the children feel the negative impact as well. We can continue losing educators because of the conditions in our schools for their workers. This golden apple represents a commitment to do my best. Unfortunately, the working conditions we educators are experiencing are not supporting the commitment this golden apple represent. Say yes to collective bargaining. Let's do it together. Let's learn, let's join the partnership. Families, students, teachers, and school board. Gracias, gracias familias.
Thank you, Ms. Soto. Our next three speakers, Roberto Pineda, Amy Gartner, and Allison Spillman.
Good evening. My name is Roberto Pineda. I am a parent of a child at Jackson Peabody Middle School. I live in Rio, Rio Road District. Mi nombre es Roberto Pineda. Soy padre de una niña en la escuela secundaria Jackson Peabody. Vivo en el distrito de Rio. I am here to talk to you about the collective bargaining for a school employee. I was a teacher for 15 years in my country. I know about that. It for this reason that I support the right of teacher and school staff to have a voice in their employment terms. Collective bargaining helps educators feel supported and valued in their profession. When the work environment is pleasing for teacher, the student, the family of student, and the community are the ones who benefit the most. Educators looking for a new school division will choose the one that displays a collaborative and respectful partnership between leadership and staff. Collective bargaining is one way to achieve that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pineda.
Good evening, members of the school board and Dr. Haas. My name is Amy Gartner, and I'm a resident of the Whitehall district. I have been a teacher at Broadwood for 30 years. I'm the former president of the AEA. It has been eight months since I spoke before the board. I talked about my recent death of my father, the importance of relationships, and the challenges of being an educator. I reminded you the AEA was the fastest-growing local in the state. All the current AEA officers spoke at the last board meeting. They are the reason ACPS employees strongly support collective bargaining and for this large crowd being here tonight. I was asked, are you sure you want to come tonight to speak? With no hesitation, I replied, oh, yes. This is what a girl growing up in the 1970s dreams about doing. I watched Billie Jean King beat Bobby Riggs. I watched Norma Jean stand on a table with her union sign. But it's not easy to be here. Eighteen days ago, I met with a hospice nurse to talk about my mother's care. Recognizing and saying, I need help, is one of the bravest things we can do. Accepting support is not a sign of weakness, but a sign of faith and trust in other people. Hospice employees are the experts on how to navigate the final days of a loved one's life. I trusted they would invest themselves in this journey with me, because that is their job. Isn't this what ACPS educators have been asking and offering to do with you? Being bold and brave is less about finding courage and more about letting go of ego. When you love what you do, when you believe in the cause and hope to leave things better, you no longer feel the need to protect self, so the fear is gone. My mother's earthly journey ended last night, but I am still here, we are still here. Do you have faith in us? Do you trust us to help and support to make the best decisions, students, families, and educators at ACPS? I am so grateful for the people that have come out tonight to support ACPS educators, the AEA, and collective bargaining. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
I know this is, it's no fun. Y'all can appreciate this as teachers. If we could stop the, the sound, and the reason I say that is because sometimes there are people that disagree with what you say, and it just makes, it intimidates people when they're talking, if they're talking and they don't align. I appreciate the look, I feel you, that's all, I just want to note it.
Thank you, Chair. And Ms. Gartner, we do express our sympathy to you and your loss of your mother. Or Ms. Spillman?
Hi. It's good to see you guys again. My name is Allison Spillman. I'm a citizen of Whitehall. I'm a parent to five ACPS students, a concerned citizen, an advocate for teachers and support staff, and a registered candidate for the at-large school board seat. I know I already sent an email in support of collective bargaining, but I'd like to take a few minutes to voice my wholehearted support. The ACPS strategic plan lists three main goals, and I believe that collective bargaining will help the county in achieving these goals. Goal one is thriving students. When educators are respected, appreciated, heard, and have the resources that they need, they can give students their very best. Collective bargaining is the strongest and most empowering way to give educators a voice in advocating not only for themselves, but also for great public education for every student. Every student, parent, teacher, and staff member has been affected by the teacher and staff and bus driver exodus and shortage over the past few years. The educator shortage was a crisis well before the pandemic, but the pandemic has made it worse. Experts like the Learning Policy Institute and the Economic Policy Institute note that low pay, poor working conditions, and lack of support for new teachers all play a role in exacerbating the educator shortage. It is impossible for our students to thrive if our educators are not thriving as well. Goal number two, affirming and empowering communities. Studies have shown that collective bargaining supports the fight for social justice and racial equity. In fact, union members tend to be more engaged in civic involvement and fight to secure vital public resources to adequately fund public schools. Collective bargaining is not just about teacher pay and benefits, although it's a very important piece. The National Education Association notes that bargaining has evolved in recent years to have a stronger community focus. Goal three, equitable transformative resources. With collective bargaining, educators advocate not only for their working conditions, but also for student learning conditions. Educators' working conditions are students' learning conditions. By addressing school and classroom issues, everyone wins. They advocate for things like smaller class sizes, less testing and more time for learning, increased staffing for nurses and counselors, better classroom technology, more social workers. The strategic plan is at the heart of ACPS, and supporting collective bargaining for our staff and educators will help ensure that our students are thriving, our communities are empowered, and our students' learning experiences and opportunities are transformed. Thank you so much for your time and consideration of this very important matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spillman. Our next three speakers, Sally Chavez, Melissa Thaxton, and Laura Hairston.
Good evening. My name is Sally Chavez, and I'm a parent of a child of Leslie Walton Middle School. I'm here to talk about granting teachers the right to collectively negotiate their contracts. I fully support the teachers being able to have a say on the terms of their employment. I support this because I think having a strong teacher is one of the most important things to my child's education. Teachers feel strong when they are supported and have the resource to do their job well. Right now, I don't feel, or I don't think, the teachers in my child's school or any other schools in Albemarle County feel this way. And that impacts in my child's education. When teachers tell the school division what they need, we should listen. We support the teachers in our, in our school community because they care about what our children's need. I ask you to listen to teachers and give them the bargaining rights they are asking. We have all heard this before. Sometimes, we need to pay a little more to get something that we last. Shouldn't that especially apply to the education of our children? These teachers are educating the children that will someday dictate our lives when we are too old to do so for our lives. Please, I ask you this question. What kind of education do you feel you're sitting where you are sitting today making these decisions for us? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Chavez. Is Melissa Thaxton here? All right. Laura Hairston.
I'm Laura Harrison. I'm a parent of an ACPS student. First of all, I want to express my full support for collective bargaining for what is our greatest resource in this division, our teachers and staff. This board made some commitments when it adopted an anti-racism policy in 2019. To see how this is relevant tonight, I'll read a statement from that policy. Quote, "The Albemarle County School Board and the Albemarle County Public Schools reject all forms of racism as destructive to the division's mission, vision, values, and goals. The board is committed to the following principles. One, establishing and sustaining a school community that shares the collective responsibility to address, eliminate, and prevent actions, decisions, and outcomes that result from and perpetuate racism." End quote. Anti-union and right-to-work efforts in this country resulted from and perpetuate racism. Similarly, the system of policing in this country resulted from and perpetuates racism. If this board truly is committed to the anti-racism policy, you will vote to allow collective bargaining without delay. If this board truly is committed to the anti-racism policy, you will reject Dr. Haas's budget request to fund the salary for a school resource officer. Instead, you will redirect funds to resources backed by data that actually increase safety for all students. If this board denies collective bargaining and/or approves bringing police back, it fails to uphold its commitment to the anti-racism policy as it is written and further tarnishes the integrity of the division. A choice to reject collective bargaining or bring cops back to our schools is a blatant and willful act of racism.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Our last two speakers, Kayden Wright and Pilar Valle-Tero.
Good evening. I'm Kayden Wright. I'm a student at Albemarle High School, and I'm here to ask the board to vote in favor of collective bargaining. Albemarle County Public Schools is not a division of accountants, lawyers, policymakers, or superintendents. It is a vision made of and run by teachers, bus drivers, food service workers, maintenance and construction workers, and office staff. The success of ACPS and the success of my personal education wasn't because of any decision made in this room. It was because of the people behind me, your employees. They have and continue to go above and beyond to make sure that ACPS's students have safe and healthy learning environments. So imagine how ridiculous it is that the needs of ACPS's employees are constantly put second to the agenda of the division. You can whip out whatever excuses you like, like, well, it's not in the budget. That's, then just add it. Collective bargaining won't cost any more than any of your new programs or any of your capital improvement projects. programs or any of your capital improvement projects. That's not a legal precedent. There's no governing body. Then work with the AEA to make it possible. Everyone I've spoken to doesn't support it. I'm not sure about collective bargaining. Does it ever get cold in the echo chamber that you live in? Frankly, it doesn't matter what you or I think, because they've spoken. They have told you what they need, what their students need, and what's best for this division, and they know better than any of us. The question is whether or not you care enough about Albemarle County Public Schools and its students to listen to them. Say yes to collective bargaining. Say yes to your employees, and say yes to your students.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Good evening. My name is Pilar Valdier, and I am a parent of a child in Jackson Burley Middle School and another child in Stone Robinson Elementary. I am here to talk to you about the many things that could be changed if collective bargaining is approved. One thing that seems to be universal for everyone is to have input in what goes into their duties and have those duties and responsibilities clearly defined in the contracts. If contracts need to be changed, the workers should have opportunities to work with the school board on developing and improving those changes. Another big issue among supporting staff is their pay. Compared with teachers, many of the supporting staff are getting paid far less, have fewer benefits, and are working the jobs of other coworkers due to the amount of positions that have gone unfilled. Many do not earn full-time benefits because their hours are under forty a week. They find themselves having to choose whether to have benefits or to have a full paycheck. A great way to boost staffing would be to allow those working the jobs to have a voice in their wages, benefits, and working conditions, which is something that ACPS could be the first in the region to implement. The important thing is for ACPS to allow their teachers and supporting staff a voice in decision-making. The division can demonstrate respect and trust by working together in good faith. Our teachers and supporting staff receive the support needed, and then our children will benefit from this. I speak as a mother of two students and a former TA. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Valdier. This ends our public comment. Chair calls it.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Ms. Valdier, I know I started smiling really big during your comments because I saw my husband and my son pop in the back of the room, although your comment was very well-received as well. But that probably seemed weird that I randomly was like... So, on our agenda right now, we have a break, which I think might be done in error. I'm not sure we need a break at this time. But I don't want to take that off the table. Do you guys want to take the five-minute break, or would you like to press on to the discussion? Okay, so I'm saying, "No, no, we'll move on." So, the next agenda item would be announcements. Do we have any announcements, Dr. Haas?
Not tonight. Thank you.
Okay. After that will be school board superintendent business, and as I'm sure most of the people in the audience are aware, we have an agenda item under that, which is discussion of public sector collective bargaining. There is not a set structure to this agenda item. It is an open discussion. We have added it to the agenda after conversation with VA and wanting to have a more open dialogue about where our heads were at, and so that is the goal. And with that, I'm just going to open the floor and see if anyone wants to jump in about how we feel about this.
I'll be honest, I don't see why collective bargaining shouldn't be implemented, considering how beneficial it is to all educators and students. Being, one, for a healthy school environment, all educators need an environment where they can be mentally and emotionally, like, healthy and be able to do their work and have, what's the word, like, a place where they can put their energy into their work without it being mentally draining. And the current system, without them being able to have a say in their job, is very much mentally draining, and that's something that students also see. Talking in my personal experience, so many of my teachers have ended up leaving, and a lot of them ended up being like some of my best ones that were very helpful, and I can only hope that they're in a much emotionally better place. I think implementing collective bargaining would be very beneficial just in general. And what would be any reasons why it wouldn't be implemented? Like, it's something that I can only see all the pros of and not really any cons. Thank you.
So, I'm... Good job. It's hard to speak, and that was very eloquently said, and thank you for sharing your opinion. Yeah, I'll jump in. I guess I'll start with the story. I was a teacher. I am no longer a teacher. I taught middle school math, and I taught in a charter school, which I've got in some flack from or about. It was not a choice where I taught. I did Teach for America, and they put you into schools. And the reason that some of these charter schools rely on Teach for America to stock their teachers is that they have working conditions that are really hard to manage. So, KIPs, I taught at a KIP school, Knowledge is Power program, and the teachers were required to be there at 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and you had to have a phone on you, and you needed to respond to any requests from a student within 24 hours, or you got reprimanded. I got observed once a week with feedback, which is actually probably a good policy and procedure, but it created a lot of stress, and I couldn't be sick. I had to arrange my own coverage if I got sick, and I left. After two years, I was done. And my mom's a teacher, and she's like, "That's not what teaching is like. It doesn't always have to be like that," but that is what I knew as a teacher, and it was really hard. Collective bargaining, when we discussed it last year, I listened to those around me and the needs of our division, and that includes everyone, and the need at that time was that we did not have an HR department. We were transferring from the county, or from the county system to our own system, which I think was a move made to help teachers and provide you guys with a better way to provide input. And we had just come off raises. It wasn't the right time for the division, and I was the one who added that onto the motion, the "not at this time," which I've had a great conversation with Vernon since then, where he said, "Well, if you say that, it seems like you're just kicking the can down the road versus giving a very set date when we're going to revisit it." I did not know we were going to revisit it this soon, but I can tell you, I do have some concerns, but I can fully acknowledge that my concerns, I feel like, are something that we can work out in a process where we communicate with each other and work on a resolution together. And I've been pretty clear with that when I've talked to people. And ultimately, I have to trust, trust teachers to provide their own voice, whether or not I have a disagreement with how it's happening. I do want to be very honest that one thing that I would like to learn more about is how the organizational leadership structure is done with VA, and wanting to make sure that what I'm hearing is the collective voice of lots of teachers, but if this is the process that you guys want, then I guess I can abide by that. But I was hopeful that meeting confer would allow us a way to interact with teachers across divisions, across schools, and really hear what we were getting from a lot of teachers. And I wanted to give that a chance, and I've heard it's going well, but it's, I also hear from all of you that you still want to proceed with collective bargaining, and so that's what I'm personally in support of at this point. And then I guess we can go through, I mean, if the goal here is just to let people know where we stand and what we see moving forward, we can go round robin.
I'm having to jump. Can you have me go next? So, I was the one person who wasn't seated when collective bargaining was brought forward. So, I was the newer person to the table, and when I came in, my initial thought was time, right? I had, the evac committee, the steering committee had been meeting throughout the winter. I was able to attend the first and second meeting, and things are going forward, and there's a good process in place. But as I talk across the county with teachers, and I appreciate everyone who spoke today, but a number of things really struck me and kind of struck with what I was feeling. Philadelphia, kind of, the wanting to be active participants in a process. And Amy Gertner, who was my child's third-grade teacher, and my heart is with you right now. The fact that you said, kind of, recognizing, saying, "I need help," is one of the hardest things to do. It's one of the hardest things for me to do as a person, as a teacher, as a former teacher, as a mom, as a leader, but I hear you, and I think it's important for us to hear your voices, to hear the voices of the teachers and the TAs and the assistants. So, therefore, where I am right now is wanting to come together and sit down with the representatives. I do want to verify signatures, partially because I really do want to make sure, as we're talking, we're talking about all the teachers and all the staff, just to understand, you know, if there is a situation where there's a piece of the county or a certain subsection of staff that this isn't, this won't work for, needing to understand why, and then what we need to do in that process. And then lastly, really coming together and thinking about how do we work together on a joint resolution. I've talked to a number of people in Charlottesville to understand the process there and appreciate the process that they put forward, and think that's something that we should consider for the county.
Can I jump in, since you mentioned the verification? I've heard there are two different camps. There are those people who just want problems solved and think that evac could do it, and then those who want collective bargaining. Most of my issues from last time have been addressed. The HR department, there are a couple of examples out there, places moving forward with this. I have heard, when I asked teachers, "So, what do you think about collective bargaining?" I've heard several times they felt like their arm was twisted on signing the card. And I hope that's not the case, but I don't know. It might be. Also, heard that they didn't exactly know what they were signing, and they thought that meant they joined the union, and that's two different things. So, a little bit more education around that piece would make me feel better about the whole thing, so I would appreciate that, and also that might help the membership in the AEA grow as well. Just since you mentioned the card verification thing. I mean, I think that we know that collective bargaining is coming to Albemarle County. The question is, when and how many casualties there'll be in the process or before that happens, so.
Can you say more about that? Alan, can you say a little bit more about that? I'm just curious about casualties.
About which part? About...
The casualties?
Yeah. I mean, I don't think this has to be adversarial process, because I believe that we all want the same thing, the best for our students, and so the less adversarial we can make this, the better, the more cooperative we can be, the better.
I don't have a whole lot to say tonight, because this week, Mr. Holden arranged for a labor attorney to come in and speak with the school board next week in a special, in a closed meeting before next Thursday's session. I expect to learn a lot. I've got a lot of questions for him or her. I'm not sure which sex that person is. And I've said to people who I've spoken to that the concept of collective bargaining, I'm not necessarily opposed to. I'm not sure that the structure from the law, the structure, the fact that we don't have taxing authority, we are, and we're not authorized to make contracts to spend money that the Board of Supervisors doesn't sign off on. It's part of what's going on in Charlottesville. They're trying to work it out with their city council for funding. And so, I hope to learn a lot next week, and if we have another one of these sessions in the next couple of weeks, I'll be able to give you a stronger opinion.
Okay, I can go next, I guess. I've listened really carefully over the last few weeks, including tonight, to all the comments that's been made about collective bargaining and all of the support that we have heard from our teachers, other personnel, and parents. And when I was in the system, I taught science in the county for quite a few years, and I realize now that what's going on in the classroom is like day and night compared to what it was when I was in the classroom. I realize that our teachers are facing tremendous pressures, both politically and maybe in many other ways, that I didn't have to face when I was a teacher, and that has really sort of changed my mind compared to last year about collective bargaining. I'm really in support of collective bargaining. I know that here in Albemarle County, we take great pride in the things that we have done, like our anti-racism policy, like the changes that we have made in framing the narrative, the things that we have done for our centers, and I think that we now need to take great pride in moving forward with collective bargaining, because we really like to think of ourselves as being in the forefront, and I think that we need to now sort of move to the forefront with collective bargaining. So, I'm fully in agreement with collective bargaining at this point in time. I realize that we'll have to really work with AEA in order to sort of come up with things with the proposal and with the work with this, but I'm really thinking that as a board, we need to do that at this point in time.
Can I say how much I appreciate the public commenter who mentioned the thing about us trying to be an anti-racist organization, and yet the whole right-to-work state came from a white supremacy standpoint, and so it, I'm surprised that we have not talked about this before, because it's just, it's huge. I don't think we can be, I don't think we're being consistent if we don't adopt collective bargaining.
Maybe one other thing to jump in and that I sort of overlooked. Also, I think quite a few of our commentators have mentioned that with Charlottesville in the process of moving into collective bargaining, and possibly some other places in the state, if we really want to be able to sort of keep our best teachers here in Albemarle County, we have to recognize that that's something that we have to deal with, and we can't have the system right next door to us with collective bargaining and we not with it. We, I think we'd be losing a whole lot of our teachers to CPS.
So, I will say, you know, I have been a big supporter of collective bargaining, and I am still. I, you know, I want for us to work together to make a resolution. One thing I will say is, I know it's a complicated thing, and you only have three minutes, and then we have however many. You know, obviously, we've looked at studies that show various things, and it's the same with the SROs. It's like, we look at studies that say, "Some people feel more safe." We look at studies that say, "It's not truly more safe. Actually, one is a perception and one is a reality." And so, there are studies that outcomes for students of color aren't necessarily better in places that have collective bargaining. So, I appreciate the anti-racist, you know, statement and history, and I think it's always important to think about those things, but I think it's a little bit more complicated than that. And I also appreciate the things that collective bargaining can bring, because I believe in sharing power. I think that's an important thing for us to do. I also know that we don't have taxing authority, so there, I just think that some of the things that we would want to give or want to do, we might not be able to. So, I guess that's just where I am with it. I support getting together, working together, but also understanding, you know, setting expectations, I guess.
Yeah, and I think that's one of the goals tonight, is just transparency and letting you guys know what we're thinking, and that's interesting that you mention that, because that was another thing that was on my mind, is that I believe in sharing power and allowing teachers...
on my mind is that, um, I believe in sharing power and allowing teachers and especially also I want to note, I really appreciated that we probably had more diverse commentary tonight than we ever have in the past. Um, so hearing from the voices that we don't typically hear from and are where I'm, I'm most worried. And I will own, although it's a hard thing to say, one thing that I was worried about when you guys first came to us is that the voices I consistently don't hear are from students that are struggling or left behind, um, students that remind me of my upbringing. And so I was thinking of those studies too, where I'm like, if this is not tied, although it doesn't all need to be tied, but that was in the back of my mind is that I'm, I'm not necessarily seeing the correlation between doing this and then helping our achievement gap get smaller. Um, so it's something on my mind. It's something that we can discuss as we're moving forward. I'm still in support of it. But in the full, in the spirit of full transparency about what goes through my head when I'm thinking about it, that is one of the biggest concerns for me when we're, when we're talking about what we want to achieve together. It's making sure that our students are, are coming out of school with opportunities to grow and have better outcomes, which I know is what we're all doing, so.
I guess last but not least, um, I, my concerns have been that, uh, in a state that didn't have collective bargaining for 50 years and with a very poorly drafted statute, we don't have a lot of guidance. We don't have court cases. We don't have, the legislature did not flesh it out. We don't have, um, case law, uh, which doesn't mean I would never support this. But my, my position last spring was why don't we just push pause, look to see? Yes, uh, we have three jurisdictions in the state that have, in, they're in some point in the process of collective bargaining. Since we don't have other guideposts, why don't we look at what other divisions are doing, take, you know, avoid some of those pitfalls and, uh, adopt some of the successes. Um, broadly, I have always favored unions in the private sector. I think it becomes much more complicated in the public sector, particularly when an organization like School Division does not have taxing authority because every decision, every decision about more planning time or an extra day off or more, uh, professional development has dollar signs and we spend 86% of our budget on staff already. That doesn't mean we can't overcome that, but it may significantly constrain the topics that we could bargain over. Um, so I am interested in seeing what the attorney, I'm an attorney by training. This is part of why I'm cautious in these things. Generally, you don't want to be the first one that adopts a brand new policy that's not been tested. But, um, I'm, I'm cautious. That's just my training to be cautious. Thank you. Just one more thing. I absolutely understand that you are committed to, um, getting collective bargaining and I respect that. I don't think it's fair to say that the only way we can show how much we appreciate the work and contributions you have made, uh, to Alamo County Public Schools is through collective bargaining. It may well be the preferred way and I get that. But I'm open to further discussion.
So, I hope that provides at least a little insight into what we're thinking. So based on you guys presenting that resolution last time, the next step that we took was we set this agenda meeting so that you can know where we kind of stand. We did go ahead and retain a lawyer who I think we should get the benefit of having a meeting with them. That will be before the March 2nd meeting. And then we will move forward from there with the resolution. I think just by sort of the tallying of the votes right here, you can see that collective bargaining is, is in the cards, is in the future and it's what we want to work towards. The, the question is just going to be how we get this kind of rolling. And I think it's a, a good and careful steward of, of public resources and decision-making to, to meet with the lawyer on the second. I am a lawyer, I will refrain from making lawyer jokes, um, and then, and then go from there. So after that meeting, I guess we'll set another agenda item from then on, based on, based on that content. Does that seem fair?
Sounds good.
Okay. I would, um, like to say thank you to everyone up here. I know I've been in the hot seat when we're discussing very difficult topics in the past and it's hard. And so thank you all for being very open, I feel like, and very honest with where we stand, even if it might not have gone over well. Thank you to all of you for being out here. This is probably the most well-attended meeting I've ever been at and it brings joy to my heart to have people participating in the process and, and hearing from people that, um, I'm just going to be really honest, hearing from people that look like me and, and that means a lot. So thank you for the work that, that you did to get people turned out and talking, talking about issues. And please feel free to reach out to us if you have any other questions. I've been responding to a lot of emails. You can reach us all individually or you can write the school board general email that comes to me. And that's all. I am going to go ahead and do the break now then before we divide up into the work session. So we'll have a 10-minute break and you do not have to stay for the budget work session. If you do not like, you can make your, your hasty retreat.
This is our agenda for this evening, and I'll come back to introduce part two to talk about a shift in the proposals that will be presented tonight versus next week. So with that, Mr. Downs.
Good evening. It's great to be with you all. As Ms. Kumazawa said, I'm here as part of your Human Resources Department to discuss staff's recommendations for the FY24 budget in regards to compensation and benefits. Just referencing in the budget book A32, A33, and C13, staff is proposing a 5% increase for all regular employees effective July 1, 2023. This recommendation supports the School Division's strategic plan by supporting thriving students, by affirming and empowering communities, and through equitable transformative resources. Revisiting a slide from Dr. Haas's presentation last week, when discussing staff's recommendation for compensation increases in FY24, it's important to be aware of the School Division's overall commitment to employee compensation. In FY23 alone, employees have received two increases, 6% and 4%. Other efforts include a $1,000 one-time bonus, as well as two phases of adjustments focused on roles and positions identified by our compensation consultant, Siegel. In addition to FY22, '23 efforts dating back to June 30, 2021, and including staff's proposed 5% increase on July 1, 2023, an employee who has been here for the duration has experienced more than a 20% increase in their compensation. As mentioned, staff is recommending a 5% increase for all regular employees effective July 1, 2023. Siegel, the School Division's compensation consultant, recommended that we use the Employment Cost Index as a sound resource for guiding our annual work when recommending compensation increases. December's ECI, the recommendation was 4.5% for School Division employees, and that certainly closely aligns with the governor's budget targeting a 5% increase. Staff's recommendation also includes an increase to the differentiation between teacher step scales. Currently, the ACPS steps are about 1.2% apart, and this budget includes work to increase that to 1.3%, a step towards Siegel's recommendation of 1.4% differentials. The proposed differentiation of 1.3% brings the ACPS closer to the competitive market's midpoint, and also allows the School Division to be more competitive at the top end of the scales. The slide is a visual representation of how the ACPS has projected 5%. In addition to the 1.3% step differentiation work, positions the School Division when compared to the adopted market using the dotted blue line, and to the City of Charlottesville Public Schools, the dotted green line. This slide represents the master's degree scale, as 68% of our teachers are on this scale, and 65% of our new hires are placed on this scale as well. As 7% of our teachers are at T30 or higher, you'll notice how the ACPS compares more favorably than historically has towards the end of a teacher's career. This slide is provided to broach the impact of a potential change at the state level. The draft funding request assumes a 5% salary increase, which is in line with the governor's introduced budget. As you may be aware, both the House and Senate amended budgets include an additional 2% salary increase. And while not final, there is a possibility that this does get approved. In that case, while the state contribution for salaries would increase, we would need to provide an estimated $2.5 million to $2.8 million in local funding to support an increase of a total of 7%. This is provided for informational purposes at this time, and budget staff will certainly follow up on this as the state budget is finalized. Another slide from Dr. Haas's presentation last week. This section started with the slide entitled "Investment in Our Workforce," highlighting the compensation efforts during the current fiscal year. Staff's recommendations for FY24 are a continuation of those efforts. And before turning it over to Claudine Cloutier, the School Division's Program Manager for Benefits, for more information about the School Division's benefit programs, I did want to pause and take any questions you may have regarding compensation.
Could you go back to the slide that showed the city, the county? Yeah, that. So they will be still slightly behind at the very end of, yeah.
Yes, sir.
I have a question from A33, but not necessarily with these slides. Should I wait on that? Oh, I'm just curious because, you know, for our outputs for the compensation increases, we'll have exit survey data will not include compensation as one of the top five reasons for leaving. Exit data and engagement survey trend data three to five years will indicate an aggregate decrease of 20% of employees who are dissatisfied with compensation. And I'm just curious about how we're getting the baseline for that? Is that something we already have, or is that something we're gathering?
In terms of, I didn't hear the first part of your question.
So we just have trends that we're trying to accomplish here, and I don't know where the baseline is to get to that trend.
In terms of people leaving because of dissatisfaction with survey?
Yeah.
So exit survey data is one source of information, and then we also look at our Gallup Engagement Survey work as well, which indicates there's a question there about compensation. There's not a direct correlation between the Gallup work and why somebody's leaving, because that's an engagement survey, but those two data points in tandem certainly give us a lot of information that we can measure against.
But so, just as it pertains to this compensation increase, and then ultimately the red, yellow, green chart that we'll have on it in the next five years, what will the baseline be? Which data are you using for the baseline? Is that this year, last year?
I believe we landed on last year, right, Dan? The exit survey data for the reason why?
We do have limited for last year, but it'll be more comprehensive this year.
Yeah, so, Mr. Redding, we have limited information on last year, so we do have a starting place, but it'll be much more comprehensive this year because of the work that our Program Manager for Retention and DEI has included. We'll have to look at that from a data perspective and make sure those two numbers correlate, but we do have some information for last year, but we can present that back when we do land on what that foundational number should be.
Great. I would like that. Thank you.
I looked it up really briefly, but can you explain the Employment Cost Index that you have?
Yeah, so Siegel, let me go back a little bit and provide a little bit of context. So historically, in tandem, the School Division and local government utilized a couple of resources, one of which was World at Work, to land at a benchmark number that we could put out every year that would be part of the, you know, the data set that would allow us to make a recommendation for what the annual increase would be. The other big piece of that work is that we do some survey work for a competitive market that takes place over the summer, so those two sort of aggregate pieces of information together lands us at a recommendation each fall. Siegel has recommended the Employee, Employment Cost Index as one. They've provided a couple of different options. We're looking at and evaluating each of those, but that's the one that they landed on most recently as a contributor that we could utilize for this cycle.
What are the other options?
I'd have to go back and look at the report specifically. There's their acronyms, ECI, EPI, and there's an additional one as well.
I'm already impressed that you.
Okay, yeah, yeah. But we landed on, when we spoke with Mary Ann, who I think was here presenting a few months ago, she landed on that one for this year as a recommendation. Some of them taken into consideration, the inflation rates, the ability for employees in certain industries and sectors to be able to afford inflation rate, and there's a lot of different factors that they do utilize.
Thank you.
This isn't really budget-related, but just a question, and in terms of when we will be talking about the strategy of where we want our teachers, where we want our classified staff to be on the scale in the new market. Do we want to be aiming for the top 75%, the top 85%? That was something we touched on back in the fall, and it was going to be coming this spring. I'm not expecting it to be involved with this, but I'm just wondering when it's anticipated that we would have that conversation? Because we want to set the goals for that.
My understanding is that we did land at the 60th percentile, so our target is the 10th percentile above the midpoint for both classified and for teachers.
And I recall when that was brought up, but then there were some of us who thought that was too low, and so we were going to try and talk about it again in the spring. Or am I misstating that?
Jono, I'm going to be brutally honest with you and tell you that I was finishing my cookie and wrapping up my wrapper and throwing it in my bag right when you said that. But then you looked at me, and I assumed that what you were asking was a follow-up around the compensation study, and I've got the work document pulled up, so I'm going to add it to the list and then discuss it with Rosalind and Matt about when.
It needs to be now. I was looking for when we can follow up on that.
So I will follow back and check up, and that's a good reminder to all board members, feel free to throw brainstorm ideas into this for future agenda topics.
For, just to be clear, though, these numbers are based on the 60th percentile, so what you're looking at is on that basis.
Do we have a copy of the step scale in our binder? You're going to impress me and like tell me the page.
The current year's scales are in the FY23 adopted budget. We typically don't publish those, so we finalize the recommendation. But if you look in this year's budget, it'll be in Section G.
Section G, okay, thank you.
I don't think there's any additional questions on that.
So I'll introduce Ms. Claudine Cloutier, our Program Manager for Benefits.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you. Good evening. I feel like it's been three years since I've been in the same room with you all, so it's very nice to see you again. I am Claudine Cloutier, I'm Benefits Program Manager, and I am going to be walking you through our health insurance program. We'll be talking about how our self-insured plan works, how we make the decisions that impact the healthcare fund, and look at potential impacts for 2024. As is obvious, given the cost, health insurance is a major benefit offering, so we're going to spend a few minutes talking about the way we offer this benefit to our employees. We have what is commonly referred to as a self-funded or self-insured health plan. In the traditional insurance model, an employer would purchase coverage for their employees from an insurance company. That company would offer access to a discounted provider network, create the plan design, which includes things like covered services, copays, deductibles, and out-of-pocket maximums, and set the rates that the group would pay for that coverage. But most notably, they also take on the risk for insuring that group. If they collect more in premiums than they paid out in claims and expenses, they make a profit. If they collect less than what they've paid out, they experience a loss. And if they lose money, they're likely to raise the premium rates for that group at renewal. I can almost guarantee you that will happen. So the self-funded model works a bit differently, and this slide illustrates how it works. Instead of paying an insurance company to take on the risk of insuring our group, we basically insure each other, and we pay the insurance company, which is currently Anthem, to administer the benefits and process claims for our plan. As you see, employees pay premiums just like in the traditional model, but instead of these going to an insurance company, we put those premiums, along with the applicable employer contributions, into the healthcare fund. We then use the fund to pay claims, administrative fees, stop-loss coverage, and so for those of you unfamiliar with stop-loss coverage, that basically limits how much we'll have to pay out of the plan in a given year. So it's traditionally called reinsurance coverage, but the way it works is if you have someone who is incurring a lot of claims on the plan, there is a limit that stops us from the fund paying anymore, and an insurance company will pay us back for any claims we pay beyond that limit. So if you have a really bad year on the health plan where you have several or more than several people hitting that limit, it keeps your fund from being wiped out, so it's very important coverage. And wellness activities like vaccine clinics and our employee assistance program also come out of the fund. So if we take in more contributions than we actually spend, the excess contributions go into the strategic reserve. If we spend more than we actually take in, then we use the reserve funds to cover the excess cost. Being self-funded gives us the most flexibility in terms of determining rates, plan design, and administrative processes, and allows us to take advantage of years in which revenues exceed expenses. Any questions about this? The healthcare fund is a shared pool that covers participating employees of ACPS, the local government, and affiliated agency stakeholders, and their families. Decisions that impact the fund are made through a two-tiered committee-based structure. The Healthcare Plan Committee consists of human resources and finance representatives from ACPS and the local government, along with a representative from one of the participating stakeholders. Working with our benefits consultant, the committee meets throughout the year to research and consider options, analyze plan and fund performance, and make recommendations as to rates and plan offerings to the steering committee. This team, which consists of ACPS and local government leadership, is the formal plan administrator and has ultimate responsibility for all decisions impacting the fund. This slide illustrates how our fiscal year straddles two of our plan years, as our plan years run January through December. It's a good little visual. As we budget for the fiscal year 2324, we use a blended rate from both the current 2023 plan year and the projected 2024 plan year. As noted on the previous slide, this budget assumes a 7% increase in employer rates for the plan year 2024, but it is very early in the plan year. We're only two years. only two months in now, so we have a lot of time to see how things are going, and we will continue to refine the projection in the coming months. The 1.4 million budget increase represents the additional budget needed for employer contributions to the healthcare fund when assuming the blended fiscal year 2324 rates. As we just saw, the draft funding request assumes a 7% employer increase in 2024. At this time, we're also projecting the need to increase employee premiums for 2024. Again, it is very early in the plan year, and actual rate increases will be determined later and shared with the school board. While the employee increase does not impact the ACPS budget, it does impact our employees. So here is a potential scenario for January of 2024. Using a 5% employee contribution increase, we would anticipate that employees would see a $1 to $17 per payroll increase in their contributions toward the health plans. As Brody mentioned, as a continued investment in our employees, the employer will bear the bulk of cost increases for the next year, and you can see the potential impact on the employer contributions on those coverage tiers. This is the last healthcare fund slide that I have for you. Any questions?
Hi, Dan.
Hi.
I'm assuming these are monthly increases, correct?
This is the per payroll, or per, I should say-
What, okay, per payroll.
Per pay, so twice the first two payrolls in every month.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
What percentage of our employees take our health insurance?
I think we are at about 86%. Does that sound about right?
Look.
On the school division side, or until?
89%.
89%?
Yeah, or is my finance department lifeline?
I haven't heard anything in the recent years about the prescription drug costs, and I know that we have talked about over the years whether we should have a different funding stream or different solution for those costs, which tend to increase faster than healthcare costs. How are we handling prescription drug coverage?
Sure. So for this last year, we went out to bid again for medical, dental, and prescription, and Anthem was the best offer right now. We always have the ability to go out and look to carve that out and go, so there have been times where our consultant might say to us, you should go out and look elsewhere and see if you can do better. So that is one of the things that we've done most recently, is just going out to bid.
My question might be too much in the weeds, but just knowing the mental health needs of our teachers and staff are only increasing, kind of pre-pandemic, through the pandemic, and now, what is the kind of level of mental health coverage? Because I know it definitely varies plan by plan about what's covered, as well as the availability of mental health specialists in the area.
Sure, sure. So the ACA basically set copays for mental health to be equivalent to regular, traditional doctor's visits. So the high deductible plan would be allowable charge thing, that's kind of beyond our control because of tax law. So it's the same as you going to see your family doctor, basically. And there are no limits on visits during the year, so someone can seek services as often as they need to without any restrictions. And of course, we have our employee assistance program that offers eight free visits, up to eight free visits, if someone doesn't want to go out and establish a relationship with a provider.
Thank you.
Claudine, I know that last year, we increased expenditures something like 2.4 million, so 12% or so. How did that impact the reserve? Remember, way back in the 216178 team, we were always talking about the reserve and needing to put more into it, or the ability to do holidays for insurance. How's the reserve looking?
Well, would you like to? We've definitely drawn down the reserve a bit, so I'll let our expert here. This is Laura Andrade. She's from the local government office of OMB.
Yeah. Thank you for allowing me to step in. I'm Laura Andrade. I'm chief of shared services and analytics. I work in the Department of Finance and Budget, and so I serve on the healthcare fund committee. And the reserve has drawn down at a rapid pace over the past three years because of a couple of factors. One of those factors is because we have offered holidays during the 2020 and 2021. We offered two employee holidays for one month, all employees that participated in the plan, and the employer did not pay premiums for that month, and so that drew down the balance quite rapidly. Additionally, I believe Ms. Cloutier said that we, the employer absorbs the majority of the cost over the past couple of years. Last year was the first year that employees had seen any change in their premiums in the past five years, and so that burden was borne by the employer and the reserve. And so at this point, we're at about a 26% reserve. Our sweet spot is between 17 and 33%. So we have our reserve right in the place that we want to keep it. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
I have two questions. On an earlier slide, you said that it was ACPS employees, local government employees, and then other stakeholders. Who are the other stakeholders in the plan?
Blue Ridge Juvenile Detention Center right now, and also the service authority.
Okay. And then my other question, is it a question perhaps, but it's a confusion that happened with me, so I guess I want to clarify. So when we have our budget presentation, I understood it as we were increasing our employer insurance premium rate. That was like one of the three things. And I guess what I'm understanding is that it's also increasing for employees. So we're increasing our percentage, but we're also increasing employees' contribution.
That's what we're looking at right now. Obviously, again, I think I mentioned this a few times, it's early in the year, so we have to see how things are going, how well the fund is performing. So right now, we're saying at least a 7% employer contribution, and the potential for a 5% employee contribution, but that's certainly not set in stone this early.
Okay. And then I have one last question, since people have cleared out the room, so I can be uneducated on this. You know, I work for the city, and my insurance is through United, I think, or one of those things. So our employees, what is the, there's no company associated with it? Is it, say, what is the company name that?
It is, it's Anthem.
Okay, so-
Yeah, we're just not paying the insurance company to insure our risk. We're taking on our own risk. But Anthem, it looks like an insurance company from the outside. They're processing the claims, we're using their discounted network. So that's how it works in a self-funded model.
Okay, so they work through like a well-known, accepted kind of insurance thing, and then behind the scenes, we're just paying the-
Right, so, right. Anthem processes the claim, just like any other insurance company would. You go and seek services, you file a claim, the insurance company sends the payment to the provider, and then Laura pays Anthem after those claims are filed. So it looks like, again, on the outside, it looks like we have an insurance company, it's just that we're funding things differently.
And they cover the reinsurance part of it as well?
No, we went out to bid, they were previously. We went out to bid this last year because they had come back with a renewal that was higher than we had anticipated. So we did go out to bid, and so now we are with a new company.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the second part of this evening, we're going to start a series of presenting about our new proposals, and I just wanted to bring your attention to a little bit of a shift in the new proposals that will be presented. So this evening, we'll start off with the substitute program improvements, phase two, and then the plan is for work session number three next week to cover these topics.
Maya, I'm so sorry, but I thought, for whatever reason, we were continuing on this subject just a little bit. I have one final question, which is what is the combination effect on a teacher's take-home pay, or an employee's take-home pay, taking into account the employer rate increase and the anticipated raise? Like, how do those, what does that look like in numbers? So is it, and then what comes to mind is when my mom said when she worked for Stafford, she got like a 2% raise, but the employee, the insurance went up enough that it was actually a negative 1% outcome for her pay, or something like that. That's the number I would be curious about. You don't need to have it right now, but I would be curious.
So what is the marginal, what is the marginal pay increase?
Yeah, what is the actual pay increase for an employee who's reliant on insurance at the various levels?
Yep. We can send some examples, because it depends on, yeah, every employee has a different rate. So if it's a percentage salary increase, the dollar amount will be different, and the impact-
In the plan, they still have a lose.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So it sounds like there's a lot of variables that go into that, so the best way to do that would be to show examples, not necessarily a formula.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any questions about this agenda? And then if there are other topics, as I mentioned last week, requests for information that you haven't already communicated, please do so, and we will attempt to cover that at next week's work session as well.
Good evening. Substitute teachers have served as essential personnel to support the daily and long-term operations of schools. Stepping in when teachers are absent, they have demonstrated flexibility and commitment to working to ensure that our students are supported in the learning. And phase two of the substitute program includes a $1.4 million budget proposal. This proposal includes both a continuation and an enhancement of the substitute program improvements that were approved in the 2022-2023 budget. The proposal requests an increase of $997,000 to include, to continue to the implementation of higher substitute teacher pay rate that has supported recruitment and retention of substitute teachers and increased fill rates. The budget proposal also includes an enhancement to last year's proposal by requesting an additional 10 school-based substitute teacher positions that would be assigned to schools that have an average substitute fill rate below the 40% during this school year. This slide recaps the phase one of the substitute program improvements that were implemented by the board. There were 46 school-based substitute teachers implemented during the 2022-2023 school year. Those school-based substitutes were in schools every day to support unexpected teacher vacancies and support other aspects of the school day. A substitute coordinator began last year as well. The substitute coordinator has focused on recruitment and retention of our substitute teacher pool, training on our sub-management and chrono systems, as well as professional training, acting as a liaison for substitutes and many other functions. There was an increased daily substitute pay rate from $97 to $140 per day. This increase has led to noticeable increases in fill rates and recruitment that will be mentioned later. Finally, phase one included a provision for substitute incentive pay. This instructional, when instructional staff are asked to cover unfilled sub jobs, they are now compensated for their loss in planning and other time. The substitute fill rate is one of the metrics used in our logic model for this budget initiative. In reviewing our substitute fill rates from September 2021, we can see the impact of the board's emphasis on compensation. Once the daily rate was increased in February 2022, it had an immediate impact. The data shows fill rates steadily increased from 42% in September of 2021 to 69% in January of 2023. While below the historic pre-pandemic average and our goal fill rate of 85%, it is a marked increase. And with phase one and phase two substitute program improvements, we expect to see continued improvement. Along with celebrating increasing substitute fill rates, we are simultaneously seeing an increase in substitute positions needing to be filled. That increased substitute need is being demonstrated in this slide. A general example of the increased substitute teacher need is seeing 1,162 subs needed in November of 2021 across the entire division. In November of 2022, that number increased to 1,747 substitutes needed. That represents about a 66% increase in substitute teachers needed year over year. This increased need in substitute teachers is foundational to the proposal for additional school-based substitute teachers. To add clarity around the proposed addition of school-based substitutes, we are presenting data that comes from a two-week time study we conducted with schools on how they were filling the substitute needs. Our reported fill rates include frontline, which is our, excuse me, which are our daily subs, and school-based subs. We believe an increase in the number of school-based substitutes would further increase fill rates. In addition, we believe it will decrease the additional demands on staff, allowing teachers to keep their planning time, and TAs, office assistants, and other professionals to resume their primary duties. In conclusion, you will see our phase one successes and our phase two proposals. In phase one, higher daily rates of pay, which have improved our substitute fill rate from 42% in September of 2021 to 69% in January of 2023. Our overall substitute pool has grown from 209 active subs in August of 2022 to 314 August, excuse me, active subs in January of 2023. There has been an addition of 46 school-based substitutes that assist with last-minute coverage, unexpected vacancies, and support other unfilled vacancies. One central substitute coordinator, Ms. Eva McGee, who has done a phenomenal job in recruiting and retaining substitutes, training substitutes on our new systems, being a liaison between our schools and central office, and finally, one of the most exciting projects Eva has begun is creating new opportunities for substitute voice and professional development. Our phase two proposals will undoubtedly build on our phase one success, and they include 10 additional school-based substitute teachers to be strategically placed at schools that have suffered from a less than 40% fill rate, increased substitute budgets, which will support the higher daily rate and increased usage and need across the district, a substitute incentive that will increase our average number of days subbed. Currently, the average number of days subbed is 19, and this incentive will kick in at 35, 70, and 140 days of subbing, excuse me. And finally, a referral bonus to continue to grow our substitute teacher pool and encourage additional days of subbing. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
This is just a clarification. I'm sure you said it at some point, but I didn't hear it or understand it. So a fill rate of 100% would be like, I have 10 positions open, and I have 10 subs, right?
Correct.
So, and it looked like we were getting to about 65, I guess, across the division? 69, 60s, mid 60s. Is that a really broad range, that we have enough schools with a fill rate below 40% that we need? Was it 10 more subs? 10 more subs?
It's not a broad range. There are selected schools that have, because it's an average, there are selected schools that have a bit higher, excuse me, a bit lower fill rate, and then are needing to use additional, excuse me, teachers on their breaks, and TAs and things of that nature. So it is a smaller, it's a smaller number of schools that do have, unfortunately, a lower fill rate.
So how many, how many extra subs, I guess, permanent subs, or, I'm sorry?
School-based, school-based.
School-based subs, sorry. So would each school then, are you talking about like three schools, five schools?
I think it really, it would really depend on, really looking at where we end up this year in our fill rates with where we like to put those.
We'll be taking a deeper dive into fill rates for the rest of the school year. So should the board move forward and approve 10 additional school-based subs, we'll be pulling that data and really analyzing. One of the things we'd like to get to is actually training some of these school-based subs at a higher level to work with our special education students, because chronic vacancies with special education classrooms really has an impact on children that most- with special education classrooms really has an impact on children that most need consistency.
Yeah, that was, that was gonna be one of my questions, is do we know if there's certain class, types of classrooms, designations of classrooms who tend to need subs longer because of chronic, um, unfilled positions in special ed or potentially those classrooms needing subs more often? I'm hearing, I'm just kind of hearing anecdotally, no data, anecdotally only, from teachers that, you know, special ed teachers and assistants needing more time off just because of, um, the stress on them. And so wondering if they're, in a way, in doing this, you maybe designate some subs that are special education only or give them advanced training so that they are better prepared for those classrooms. That tends to be a little tougher.
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, I think we're hearing similar anecdotal evidence, and we're very interested in that. We're actually offering our very first training for substitutes on March 31st, where they will receive pay for coming. And one of the ses- one of these sessions is working with our special education students and understanding their unique needs. Um, the intent would be, yes, to go forward and provide that additional training, but special education is one of the areas of greater need for substitutes.
It would be great if we could see some data, if, as you're getting it, if we could see some of that data.
Are these vacancy, i- is the, the need for filling the vacancies, um, is this like in the average workplace? It seems like there was pretty high level of vacancies on a given day, and I just wonder what we know about that. You know, is someone out of maternity leave or their kid was sick or what kind of, do we know what PT, you know, what personal days off look like?
I, I don't know that we know exact reasons. I think we can make some general assumptions. For example, the surge in absences in, um, October, November, December timeframe, I think of flu, RSV, and COVID, all converging at that timeframe. We can make some generalizations like that, but we don't have specifics beyond what employees put in in terms of personal leave, sick leave.
So, yeah, and I, I just did some quick iPhone calculator math while Dr. Sears was running off those numbers, but in November, you had a 7% daily average absentee rate. The, the standard really is 5%. So if you can have a daily absentee rate of 5%, you're doing, you're doing pretty well. So even in the midst of a tough time, we were still at about 7% across the division.
Thank you.
So just to clarify, what I was hearing you say was that the, the, the numbers of the, uh, are, the fills are going to be looked at at the end of the school year, and then adjustments will be made or proposed early in the summer for the following school year, for next year.
Yes, for the addition, for the additional su- uh, school-based subs, yes.
Could you go, I think it's, I can't remember, for one sub, one, one sub. For one slide, uh, other way, to the, to the, yeah. So is, is other principals and assistant principals, nurses, like who would other be? I mean, I know everyone does other and no one knows, but in, like, is that, like, that's my guess based on looking at this.
It's, uh, it's principals, assistant principals, it's staff from the central office.
Yeah.
Lots of times, it's, um, instructional coach, lead coach. Sometimes the school will be going through like, um, everybody having the flu, like Red Hill might say, man, you know, we have seven people out today, and then we all just kind of say, okay, who's going to go cover today at Red Hill? So that's your other category. Lot of it is school administrators.
Yeah.
Can I have a question? I know in the past, sometimes we would have like problem schools that might be hard to fill because of where they're located in the county. Do we still have that problem, and will this be able to address that?
Yeah, uh, there, there are some that have less sub attendants, especially if they're relying on a regular network of subs who might live nearby. Um, so this, yes, if the school falls below that threshold, they would be eligible to be assigned one of the additional per-minute subs.
And Dan, you might put, you're, you're, some of the conversations we've had is a school might need more than one, depending on, they, um, they were trying to figure out like a calculator for, you know, you get below 40%, but, um, some of the schools in the urban ring have a lower fill rate, so it might be so low that you might say, well, if we have two there, it'll, it'll make the difference.
Absolutely.
And, um, the smaller rural schools, the staff numbers are so low that by having that permanent sub out there, it's really made huge dent in that, in the issue you were talking about, because they don't have a, a port, like, they don't have a lot of absenteeism, so just having the one sub there really helps them cover.
Okay, great.
I think y'all did, I think the board really, you know, it's, it's always a risk when you're looking at something like this, but the thing I would point out is that even with the, the continuation of COVID-19 and then, um, other infections, flus, things like that that have come about at the beginning of this year, our, our teacher attendance has really kind of held firm. So I think your, your investment in the permanent subs is, is solving a long-term problem. And it's a little risky because, you know, I, when I talk to my colleagues around their state, they're like, what, a permanent sub in a school? You know, you're going to have more absences, but our, our employees haven't created more absences due to the fact that they have the coverage.
And are per- are permanent subs on a, um, teacher scale or is that a staff scale?
They are, they are on the same pay grade as a TA, so they're a pay grade six.
Got it.
Um, they're eligible for benefits leave.
Are there any other questions? I, I want to personally say thank you for this presentation. I think it was really well laid out, and I appreciated the stats and the numbers and the way that you guys did it, so. I know I say thank you a lot, but this one was, this one was a winner for me, so good job and thank you. Um, they're all winners, but this one's, this one's a good, well, I'm just going to stop while I'm ahead. Thank you, it was great.
Thank you all. Um, so I just want to remind the board and the public that there, if there are any follow-up questions, they can be directed to budget@k12albemarle.org at any time. And there's also a URL on the top right of the slide that has all of our materials in it, so if you want to go back and review anything, everything will be posted to that website. So that concludes work session number two. Is there anything else before closeout?
Well done.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, so I guess that leaves it to me. Is there any other business by board members?
Oh, I did want to, um, say that we, I think many of us attended the Equity and Opportunity Fair last Saturday at Burley, and I, I thought it was really great. I, um, I went to, uh, the lunch with, um, Principal Blount, and, um, I'm so sorry that it-
It's rusty.
Lucille. Um, about the history of Burley, and that was really-
Lucille Smith, yeah.
Lucille Smith. That was really amazing. And then I went to the, um, afternoon panel of teachers who are CRT certified and, um, students in classes, and that just, I got chills during that. Um, and I just wanted to thank everyone who was involved in that, and I talked with Dr. Kaiser earlier, and I just, I thought it was really good, and I hope that, I hope to see that again.
Any additional business?
It's not really business, but I, I spent two hours this week at Greer, and, uh, ending the meeting on a not, high note, Principal Sanders talked about the association of Greer and the UVA football team. The football team was, um, required to do a day of community service, and he thought maybe there'd be two or three football players that showed up. There were 35. And not only that, but they have continued to come every week this year, and so much so that they have, um, they, the UVA, oh, and not only that, but one of the, the football players who was graduating in, you know, December, um, was so concerned that he, and they were each assigned to a classroom, and they consistently go. Um, one of the football players was graduating, and he made sure that he had a substitute football player to go into that classroom.
100% fill rate?
100% full, right. They really expected this to be a one-time deal, but the football players really have gotten a lot out of it. I got a bracelet that says UVA loves Greer Elementary, and I am told that after the shooting at UVA, um, Greer had produced one that said Greer loves UVA football. So it was, it was a great visit. We talked about other things and fill rates and stuff like that as well, but I thought that was a very inspiring story.
That's awesome. Maybe we can send them a thank you. Maybe Phil can get a thank you note that we can sign and, and send to them as a sign of appreciation. Um, that's great to end on a good note. I feel like we should make that a habit. I kind of like doing announcements at the end and hearing all the positive stuff that's going on. But with that, I call this meeting adjourned so that we can also go home and go to bed.